Audio's on?
Can I do it like that?
All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Wenatchee City Council meeting. For the record, it is Thursday, April 8, 2021. Time for the regular meeting of the Wenatchee City Council. I've called the meeting to order. We always start with the pledge to our flag. So, Councilmember Harold, would you lead us?
I would. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And also for the record, we have five council members present. Mr. Bailey's on vacation. And Councilmember Huffaker, are you with us on the phone this evening?
I am here.
Excellent. So, our first item on our agenda, time to consent items, which includes approving this evening's agenda, the vouchers, and minutes from the previous meetings. I entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve Agenda vouchers and minutes from previous meetings.
Second? Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Kulaas to approve this evening's agenda, vouchers, and our minutes from the previous meetings. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have one presentation this evening regarding Arbor Day, which is right around the corner, so I'm not sure who's got that.
They give it to me.
Councilmember Quivas, would you read that into the record, please?
Certainly, sir. Proclamation of the City of Wenatchee. Whereas the Greater Wenatchee Arbor Day Committee has distributed trees in north-central Washington for 32 years, and whereas Arbor Day celebrations have provided over 175,000 trees to be planted in an area, and whereas trees, a renewable resource, cool our homes, clear the air, and provide food and shelter for birds and beneficial insects, and whereas planting trees beautifies our community and provides a healthy, happy family activity, and whereas to help celebrate Arbor Day safely this year, pre-purchased seedlings will be distributed during a drive-through event on Saturday, April 10, at the Wenatchee Cemetery. Now therefore, I Frank Coons, Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, hereby proclaim that April 10, 2021, is Arbor Day in the City of Wenatchee, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our community, forestry resources, and further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden their heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cast the great seal of the City of Wenatchee to be affixed on this eighth day of April, 2021. Frank Coons, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Quivas. And David Erickson, you want to come up and grab that on behalf of the Arbor Day Committee?
Is it true we're doing it at the cemetery?
We are, yeah. So, we've been working with the Arbor Day Committee for several months on this order and event. Ordinarily, they would do it down at Walloa Point Park in the picnic shelter distribution event, where people would come up and pick up the seedlings they want and all that stuff. Because of COVID, we decided to do a pre-order this year, so the last couple of months, they've been ordering online. And we'll be handing those prepackaged seedlings out through a drive-through event at the cemetery on Saturday.
Excellent.
Hopefully, it'll go smoothly.
Good. All right, so we have a number of action items today, a number of park issues, and then some stuff on some finance obligations and things. So, David, we'll start with you regarding an appointment to the Parks Board, and park design standards, and vandalism reduction program policies. So, we'll start with those three. All right, David?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Dave Erickson, Parks and Recreation Director for the city. We currently have a vacancy on our Arts, Rec, and Park Commission, and Ryan Harmon, he's actually one of our city engineers, has applied to serve on the commission, and we'd be happy to have him. His application material is in your agenda packet, so we're requesting approval of Resolution 2021-14, I believe it is. Appointing Ryan.
Should be 2020-14.
2020.
21.
21.
Yeah, should be 2021-14, I'm guessing.
Yep.
Change that in our little thing.
Oh, the resolution is correct. It's just not on the agenda report.
Any questions for David? Scrivener's here.
Don't give me John A. Jackson.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council approve Resolution 2021-14, appointing Ryan Harmon to position number eight of the Arts, Recreation, and Parks Commission.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Kulaas, second by Councilmember Quivas to approve Resolution 2021-14, appointing Ryan Harmon to position eight of the Arts, Recreation, and Parks Commission.
And would Mr. Scrivener correct the spelling of the mayor's name on that resolution?
It's close. No way. End of the T are reversed. Sometimes there's no T. It's okay. I sign all of them.
Dyslexia strikes again.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. I had no idea we had park design standards.
We do.
Until I got 150 pages sent to you that we had park design standards.
Yeah, that's this little one. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, I put together a real quick PowerPoint presentation to just kind of walk through this document, some of the changes. So, our first park design standards, we developed those from 2009, or excuse me, 2007 through 2009, and those were adopted in 2011. Basically, the document provides some guidelines for development projects that we have, park development projects that we put together. And the current plan is in six different sections, and we'll kind of go through that a little bit here. To provide you an update on the update, the first section is really, we just updated the introduction because it was the old introduction from more than two comp plans ago, so we just updated that language. A lot of general formatting. Essentially, we added pictures and made it prettier to look at. So, that's a big one.
Very cool pictures, by the way.
Thank you.
Very good.
Section two, just updated the department name because that's changed from the previous plan. Section three, we updated the information. As I mentioned, we have had two parks comprehensive plans adopted from the time that we did our first design standards to the current update. So, we've updated now the standards to be consistent with that pros plan. Reorganized, section four is really the biggest changes. So, we reorganized it. We took information from two different sections, combined it into one, as well as the graphics from the appendix, and tied it all together into one section to try to make it a little bit more concise and easier to find things. And we improved the graphics throughout the entire document. So, you know, in the past, we've had hand-drawn graphics in there to depict things. Technology's improved quite a bit since we did our first set, and we're able to update those. Couple of other things that we did in section four. We had several facility types that we had no standards for. So, we took and we added things like disc golf and security cameras and yard hydrants and those things you see listed there. So, those are all new adds to this document. The other items that are in the current plan or in the previous plan, we just updated those to meet the current safety standards and other standards that are out there. And then section five, just some minor wording changes and updated the department name again. Kind of the update process. November, December last year took some time, actually took some vacation time and was able to work on this. And you can actually thank COVID a little bit for this because this has been one of those things that's been on the list of things to do for a number of years, just haven't had time to do it. And so, working remotely, I was able to just kind of focus on it and get that update prepared. We took this to the February 2 Public Works Committee for review and comment. Arts, Rec, and Park Commission has looked at it January, February, and March of this year, and they unanimously recommended approval of it at their March meeting.
It wouldn't take them that long just to get through it.
Yeah. And I want to thank Councilmember Kulaas for providing a lot of good input on the community garden section, especially with those comments. With that, I'll try to answer any questions you might have.
I just have one stupid question because I'm entitled to one of those each meeting. So, we have parks inside the city limits of the city of Wenatchee that are not owned by the city, that are owned by another governmental agency or agencies, including school districts and the PUD. Does our park design standards apply to them?
Nope, just us.
Just us?
Yeah.
So, it's not in our zoning or comp plan area where they would look to our plans and have to adopt to those?
They don't have to adopt those, but they do ask for them often to say, hey, you know, especially up in the foothills, you know, what are your trailhead standards? What are your shelter standards? What are your picnic table standards? So, not only us, but other agencies around north-central Washington have asked for that. We actually had a, sorry, I'm rambling, but we also had a couple of communities, one in Utah and one in Minnesota that wanted to use ours as a model for theirs.
So, the out-of-state ones, you're selling them to them? I'm okay helping the in-state guys, but yeah.
That's that side hustle.
Okay.
That's what he was doing at home.
That was vacation. All right, that was my only question.
Keith Huffaker, I have a question for you. So, these park standards, are these for only a new park? Or is there, if we're doing a certain amount of modification to a park, say Lincoln Park, when do these standards kick in for the entire park? Or is it just limited to the scope of the project of the area that's being updated?
Yeah, Keith, these are for when we update elements within the park. So, let's say Lincoln, for example. So, the fields, the picnic tables, the things that we're putting in there, then will meet these standards. But we don't go to the entire park and renovate the whole park at that one time, unless there's budget for it, obviously. But what we do is just update those items as they come up for the existing parks. If it's a brand-new park, then they would be brought up to these current standards when we're designing it.
That's what I was thinking. Thank you for that clarification, though.
You bet.
Any other questions for David? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that the council adopt the park design standards and development policies update as presented this evening.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Kulaas, second by Councilmember Asparza to approve the park design standards and development policies update as presented in today's, this evening's packet. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, David. And vandalism reduction program policies.
Okay, so I have another presentation for you on this one as well. And I thought it'd be beneficial to maybe provide a little bit of context, a little bit of background information on the entire program, not just the policy. So, we'll kind of go down that. You also have similar information in your agenda packet. Picture of the fire at Lyons Locomotive Park from Saturday. So, anyway, park vandalism, super expensive. You guys know this. Expensive, time-consuming to respond to. We've actually been implementing a number of aspects of our vandalism reduction program for a number of years as we've been able to budget for it and implement things. Three main areas. It's SIP TED, which is Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, is one of the main areas, programs, and then policies. So, on the environmental design things, you can do things like improve the lighting of the parks. Helps keep crime down. And these are things that the police department also talks to homeowners about. So, a lot of it is very similar that way. Security cameras. So, you guys know we've been adding security cameras to a variety of different park areas. Couple of the photos here. You can see the black and white on the left picture, and then you can see kind of the result of that. We had a guy cutting the wires to all the electrical in Hale Park. The one with the person getting arrested up there, that was like five minutes after we installed the Skyline Drive camera. And then the other picture is Centennial Park, and we had a guy down there that was, had trained his dog to chew out the sprinklers. So, when each station came up, the dog would go over and chew it until he tore the sprinkler off, and it would shoot water up in the air. So, they've been pretty effective in catching folks, sometimes mostly after the fact unless we're monitoring them. And all the parks then are signed, too. Vandal-resistant features. So, two pictures on the left, that's the old Lincoln Park picnic shelter. You can see we have a lot of surface area, a lot of canvas space for vandals. The two pictures on the right, actually the similar tables, the picture with the pink graffiti on it was actually Pennsylvania Park and then Lincoln Park on the right. So, we've eliminated a lot of the canvas space. You see, we don't have those big thick walls. We don't have the picnic tables now with the canvas, the wood tops. It's now the vandal-resistant vinyl-coated steel, and they're bolted to the floor. So, that way, they don't end up in the back of pickup trucks. They don't get flipped over and broken apart, and it's harder to vandalize those. So, we're doing that system-wide. So, even the park design standards have elements like that in it so we can withstand some of the vandalism a little bit better. Increasing visibility, so reducing hiding spots, things like that. So, you can see Locomotive Park, we're tearing apart the rocks there. And then Centennial Park, we removed those wing walls for safety outside the restroom. And then finally, adding and changing the function of the areas. So, take, in this case, it was a part of Hale Park. You can see what it was before and then after. Eliminated a bunch of those hiding spots. We've added activity to try to get more eyes on the park. It makes the other folks uncomfortable for doing bad stuff. Next area is programs. So, we've implemented a park watch program, which is similar to a block watch, and this is at each of the park areas. And we have hopefully neighbors that are watching the park letting us know what is going on. And then as we were developing the policies, we were doing research from what other cities were doing. And from what we've heard, a park ranger program is really, from what they've told us, is the most effective way. So, you can have a park ranger talking to the people in the parks. So, trying to not only educate, but also reduce the things before they happen, reduce the activities. So, there's a number of policies and procedures and things that we're kind of working through. I don't know if we'll be able to get there by the end of this year because of other workload, but we're going to try. One other policy that you guys actually adopted last October is changing the park rules to daylight use only from a standard time, so that way it reduces the time that people are in there after dark, when it's dark, when they're doing those things. And we've actually also changed the restroom operational hours, too, because those are our prime target for vandalism. So, we've shrunk those down to when we have staff available for the most part. But the reason we're here, we have three policies. They're all kind of interrelated. First one's removal of garbage temporary shelters, loose needle collection, and lost and found policy. And I'll give you kind of a high-level cover of that. So, the first one, we're requesting approval of Resolution 2116. And this is the garbage and temporary shelter policy and procedure. And this is for park areas only. So, city parks, the stuff that our park crews deal with almost on a daily basis. Really, what it does is it provides more specifics on the process that we go through when we come up with an area, when we see an area and have to respond to it. And it defines what is cleaned up, what is kept, and what is grown out. Because they'll go down, well, is this garbage? Is it not garbage? What do we do? So, it sets standards for what we do keep and what we don't. The next one is the loose needle collection policy and procedure. So, this is Resolution 2117. And really, this provides us some guidelines, safety guidelines and procedures to collect needles that we're finding in the parks. You'd be amazed at the amount of needles that we find everywhere from playgrounds to the shrub beds. Restrooms are obviously the worst for us. Saddle Rock restroom, we went up there. That was last summer. You open up the lid, and it's, you look inside, which is never really a great thing to do in a restroom, but you look inside, and it's solid needles in there. So, that's where they're dumping them. So, this provides some basically information for our staff members on the proper way to collect those needles and dispose of them safely. And then the last one is an update to our existing lost and found policy and procedure, which would be Resolution 202118. This one ties really kind of interrelated with the other policies. The biggest changes, I would say, is that it adds a bike-specific section. We find bike parts everywhere, so we added that in. And there's a few other smaller changes to our current policy that are in there. It follows RCW requirements, and I mentioned that it ties into those other policies. So, the development process for this, we actually started the initial research and development of these policies last summer and contacted, oh, gosh, it was over 30 other cities around the state to find out what they do and what their policies were, as well as AWC and a few others, MRSC. We sent it out for staff review and comment both October and January of 20, October 2020, January 2021. Sent it to RMSA for their review to make sure we weren't missing something from a risk management standpoint. And they said that they follow the best management practices out there, which is kind of nice to hear. Steve Smith reviewed them March of this year, and we've had the Arts, Rec, and Park Commission review it, it looks like three or four times. And they unanimously recommended approval of all those policies in March 2021 meeting. So, with that, I can try to answer some questions you might have.
As always, David, very thorough.
Just sort of surprises.
In regards to cameras in parks, how many parks now have camera systems set up?
Oh, give me a second, Keith. I'll add them up. Well, I don't know if I want to name them all out, but.
Just give us a number.
Which ones don't? Is it 11?
Yeah, just a rough numbers. You know, how many with, how many without?
It's like 10 or 11 have them. I want to say we have roughly 20, 21 parks or park areas. Not all of those really need cameras. We do have a couple more that we're looking at at this point. Another set potentially a locomotive, maybe rotary for a budget request upcoming years.
Thank you.
So, I guess my question is, are you keeping track of like these instances of vandalism and those kind of things? Because I think some of these programs that you're implementing can help reduce, but if we're tracking that to see what is successful and what's not. Also, hopefully, with some housing things coming up for the homeless, that that might also be able to be helpful in tracking if there's a greater impact of that as well. Just more of a statement.
Yeah, and we are tracking. So, we track both, you know, just like Saddle Rock had somebody drive through the fence this last week. And we had, we had three incidents this week alone. And so, our maintenance guys go out. They're the ones that usually discover it. So, they track it that way. I try to get them to get pictures of everything that they can because that's always helpful. In some cases, there's police reports that are involved. And then also this year, we're tracking through our work order system, the time and the materials it takes to respond to all of these. So, by the end of the year, we should have some good hard data then, too, on the cost associated. Thank you.
Any questions for David? If not, I would entertain a motion to adopt all three of those resolutions. I think we can do them all at once.
You want them all at once?
Sure.
Okay.
Lock them out.
Your Honor, I move approval of Resolution Number 2021-16, removal of garbage and temporary shelter policy and procedure, also Resolution 2021-17, loose needle collection policy and procedure, and Resolution 2021-18, lost and found policy and procedure.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Asparza to approve Resolution 2021-16, removal of garbage and temporary shelter policy and procedure, also to adopt Resolution 2021-17, loose needle collection policy and procedure, and to adopt Resolution 2021-18, lost and found policy and procedure. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, David.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Jeremy, digester design and school street sanitary sewer extension. Come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Jeremy Hoover, Senior Utility Engineer. And I'm here to start off with the wastewater treatment plant digester four project. This has been in front of you a couple of different times. Basic idea is we're building a fourth digester. It's a secondary digester to help augment the treatment plant to increase capacity.
Is that a big round thing that's full of stuff?
Yes. The gist of it, yes.
I got to get it in my mind of what I'm looking at. Okay. The pools, those stuff.
This is not the pools. This is the enclosed tanks.
Got it. Thank you.
The pools are the aeration basins.
Perfect. Thank you.
Or the secondary clarifiers, depending on which ones you're talking about.
You'll have to draw me a picture later.
No problem. Easily done. Simple stuff. The digester four project has been under design for a couple of years now. HDR Engineering is our consultant on it, and we've gone through a couple of iterations, a couple of revisions, and some changes in scope every now and then to see what we needed to do to comply with the current code, NFPA 820, for fire protection, as well as integrate everything together controls-wise, pumping-wise, hydraulics. Everything's necessary to make the new digester system work with the existing facilities, which were built in the early '50s. So, everything's going on 70-plus years old at this point with a few updates that we've done since then. The study that HDR did for the fire protection requirements turned out that we needed a new building to go between digester three and digester four that will house the new controls. Basically, everything has to be in a spark-resistant environment, and the existing solids handling building does not qualify as being a spark-resistant environment. So, that was the need to relocate many of the pertinences associated with a digester, the MCCs, et cetera, into a new structure. We are technically at 100% with the design that we have, that we submitted to Ecology as part of our application for the, pardon me, for SRF loan funding. But in the process of going through the package,[1628.83] But in the process of going through the package, trying to get everything out to Ecology to meet their timelines, we did notice that there are a few things that still need to be addressed regarding constructability of the digester, the long-term maintenance and operation of this facility. Basically, a few more upgrades that need to happen to the plan in order to make it buildable in such a way that it'll work best for our long-term operations. So what you have in front of you is consultant amendment number three for HDR to continue putting together these design services. Couple things that I want to note about this, the SRF loan, we were recommended for approval by the Department of Ecology and contingent on the state legislature's funding of the program, we are set to receive funding for the digester project. So that, that is a good thing. The changes that we're wanting to make to the project do not amount to any kind of a material change to the project, so that should not impact our funding. But we didn't want to make changes during the approval process back in October, November, December that might possibly cause problems during that application process. The other thing that I'd like to point out is I did make a small clerical error when I was putting together the project budget. When I quoted the approved project from 2020, two of the line items are incorrect, but the total on the bottom is. So basically, instead of the design engineering for 1.225 million, it's 1,301,000. That's what was previously approved. And for construction engineering, instead of 89,200, it's 189,200. Did entry error on my part when I put together the agenda report.
Is our loan amount for the entire amount of the project, or five million dollars? How much was it? I don't remember.
It's the, the entire construction cost.
Okay, so maybe nine million dollars.
It'll be something in that neighborhood. We'll be negotiating with the Ecology, Department of Ecology here in the next couple of months after the legislature approves everything.
Sounds like a 1% interest rate or something?
It's very low. It's like one and a quarter or something like that.
Good. Any questions for Jeremy? If not, I'd entertain a motion regarding the digester contract with HDR.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to authorize the mayor to sign consultant supplemental agreement number three on behalf of the city with HDR Engineering, Inc., for additional design services for the water, I'm sorry, for the wastewater treatment plant digester number four, project number 1810.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Asparza, second by councilmember Hornby, to authorize the mayor to sign consultant supplement agreement number three on behalf of the city with HDR Engineering, Inc., for additional design services for the wastewater treatment plant digester number four, project number 1810. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Jeremy, and now the school street sanitary service. Kill them both, Jose. Every week he gives me a pen, and every week it runs out of ink.
So school street, as part of the old station sewer expansion, we extended sewer up school street, past the school itself, to a point just south of the Easy Street and School Street intersection. There are a couple of projects that are planned on the east and west side of the School Street corridor south of Easy. Those will be extending the sewer up to the Easy Street intersection. This project that you see in front of you will, will continue that sewer up past the canal to Knolls Road. This is in anticipation of a further extension of that sewer up Knolls Road as part of the county-led project that they're, where they're reconstructing that road all the way up to American Fruit. We will be installing in that portion of the project, a new 10-inch sewer in the new Knolls Road corridor, and the county is going to be acting as lead agent on that construction. So we'll just be including those designs with the county project. This particular phase, we are wanting to build ahead of that, so that the outfall will be there for, ahead of the school, the Knolls Road construction, and this will also allow us to get the sewer built underneath the canal and have that all ready to go. That construction has to be performed when irrigation service is off. So we're expecting that to be October-ish for that little section. So in, in the larger scheme of things, the plan is to serve multiple basins by this sewer. There's a basin north of Knolls Road, along School Street. This particular portion up Knolls Road will eventually sewer through American Fruit and the area up to the north and west of there. There are defined drainage basins that were identified in the comprehensive plan, and this is just another segment of the line extension system up in Sunny Slope.
Now, the county's doing Knolls Road, so we need to, it's a good time to get this knocked out, and so it makes sense to keep, keep going where the roads are getting dull, I guess. All right, any questions for Jeremy? If not, entertain a motion to continue working with RH2 on this project.
Your Honor, I make a motion, city council authorize the mayor to negotiate with RH2 Engineering, Inc., for design services for the school street sanitary sewer extension project number 2105 and further. Authorize the mayor to sign a contract on behalf of the city.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by councilmember Hornby, second by councilmember Harold, to authorize the mayor to negotiate with RH2 Engineering, Inc., for design services for the school street sanitary sewer extension project number 2105, and authorize the mayor to sign a contract on behalf of the city. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Brad Posenjack, an update to financial policies and some changes perhaps to our low-income assistance program.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brad Posenjack, Finance Director. I think the first item I've got is a resolution to adopt and combine several different policies that this council has adopted over the years. These have all been adopted or presented and adopted as separate policies, and I've kind of wanted to be able to combine all of our policies into one financial policy document. And then there are a couple other policies that have never, I don't believe have ever been adopted by the council, which are the cashiering policy, and I think even there's a, there's an art fund calculation policy in there that I thought would be helpful to just have all in one document. So the cashiering in that, the cashiering in the art fund policies are ones that council has not seen before, but all the rest of the policies are in substantially the same form. There were a couple outdated titles or terminology that was updated in those other policies, but no other, no other significant changes. So unless anybody has any questions.
Basically, just putting all of our policies into one big one.
Yep.
You're trying to get more paperwork than Dave? Or is there like a competition between the two of you?
That's right. That's right. No, no. I'm, I'm just wanting to have it a little bit easier to find all these.
I'm joking, I know. It's all good. No, no idea, one place, huh?
I know.
Yeah. Any questions for Brad? I know the Finance Committee has seen this as well, so if not any questions, I entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number 2021-19, adopting an amended, restated and combined financial policy and procedure manual. Second.
Motion by councilmember Harold, second by councilmember Kulas, to approve resolution 2021-19, adopting an amended, restated and combined financial policy and procedure manual. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Brad. And low-income assistance program, what's going on here?
So about 50 years ago, the city adopted our senior and disabled low-income discount program that allowed for low-income utility rates at 50% of the regular rate. This covered the water, sewer, storm, and garbage utilities that we had. Several months ago, the city entered into a new contract with Waste Management that reduced this rate for garbage service only from 50% discount to a 20% discount. While we were revisiting the Waste Management contract, we realized that that specific 50% discount rate had been removed from our code several years ago, but we've continued to use that 50% rate. It just, that number actually disappeared from our code. Therefore, we needed to update our code one way or another. So as we were looking at updating our code, we were, and seeing that the Waste Management discount went from 50 to 20%, we wanted to revisit our 50% discount that's provided for, that's our existing one for water, sewer, and storm rates. So we compared our utility discount rates to the discounts provided by other local utilities, and I think you've seen some of, some of those numbers in the, in the agenda report. And as we were comparing those, we noticed that our discount rates are roughly double those of the other, other entities that provide utilities. So our discounts ultimately should probably be in the 25% range, not in the 50% range. And after discussion with Finance Committee, we completely acknowledged that reducing the rate from 50% down to 25% would have a sharp impact on our low-income discount customers. Therefore, at this point, we're recommending that council slowly reduce the discount rate starting with a move from a 50% discount to a 40% discount, and then maybe over time we'll get down to discount rates that are closer to some of the other utilities around, around the region. At the same time, we also have another low-income utility assistance program that's available to customers who don't qualify as senior or disabled, but it was intended for customers that are having sort of like one-time financial difficulties. Maybe they got laid off or having medical, medical issues. They could go down to Community Action Council, apply for this program and, and receive a discount. This had an end date of 2020, just a couple months ago. Council extended that through 2021. Since we were already updating some of our discount program, figured it would be a good time to just remove that end date for this program and have it a permanent one until we revisit it again, and, and set in stone the actual dollar amounts of credits that if you're an eligible customer, if you have both water and sewer, you could get a $300 discount. If you have water or sewer, but one or the other, then you could get a $150 discount. That, for the average customer, that provides about three months of service. So three months out of 12 months, it's roughly a 25% discount. So it's kind of in the same, in the same realm as some of the other discounts. So those are the kind of the two main, two main items to cover. I, I think it's also worth, worth mentioning that at this, at this point in time, there's also this rental assistance. I think you've heard Glenn come and talk about the T-RAP and the E-RAP programs, or state and federal funding. It sounds like there's a program that's going to be launched pretty soon here with Community Action that it, people who meet low, who meet certain income criteria can go and apply through Community Action, and if they have delinquent utility bills, which we have quite a few customers with delinquent utility bills, that that program will be able to assist in help, helping to erase, I don't know if it's erasing completely their, their balances or a good portion of it, but we will be having information on that coming, hopefully in the next week or two.
So the Finance Committee chatted about this a couple of different times, and I think from, from my perspective, I think there's a couple of things going on. When someone applies for a 50% discount, your staff checks out all of their financial records, reviews tax returns, there's a number of people who will try to bend the rules, and it sometimes puts staff in a very awkward position to sort of push hard on, you know, because if there's two people living in the house and they're both working, then it's both incomes, and there's just lots of stuff that goes into it. So I think they've taken this job very seriously, and I think over time, I think what we'd like to get to is move it from 50 to 40, 40 to 30, get down to that 25%, and then make it where someone just signs an affidavit, that they meet the qualifications, check three boxes and sign. So we don't look like we're the, we're the, trying to be the police, which I think probably makes some more sense. So I think this is sort of phase one, and hopefully we'll get to phase two and phase three and make it so they don't have to be the auditors all the time and try to make the program a little more efficient.
More friendly for staff and to customers. Right now, customers are being asked to, to provide a boatload of documentation, and so we, yeah, we want, we want to make, we want to kind of soften the program and make it, make it easier on everybody.
Brad, can you correct me if I'm wrong, but don't we use Community Action for other things that they kind of qualify with their low income and let us know for other discounts with city services?
Yes, that's the, that's that 300 or 150 utility assistance program. So yes, they do, customers, we do direct customers to apply at Community Action for that existing city program that provides the $300 a year, and it's kind of one time, but once a year maximum towards their utilities. And, and besides that program, there are, there are new programs coming online with the grant funds as well through Community Action. But the low-income discount program is one that has always been done with city staff and, but I, that is something to consider, that that could also possibly be vetted through Community Action.
Currently.
I was just, I was just wondering if there was a way that we could use Community Action's qualifications for any discount we give.
And one, one of the things with our senior low-income discount program is that it is specifically, the way our code is worded, it is specifically tied to the RCW that also governs the senior and low-income exemption for property taxes, which is much more complicated than our utility, our, our other utility assistance program that Community Action manages. So I, I do think that there, there's probably another, another way to look at that program or the RCW guidance for our senior low-income discount program. I believe it, I believe it comes from a hesitation of the whole state constitution that doesn't allow us to gift public funds. And so since we, there's an RCW that allows, allows states and counties to do a senior low-income discount, I think we felt it was safe to point to the same guidance that the state uses to make sure that we weren't gifting public funds and we were targeting the, the lower-income folks and, but, but yeah, that can always be revisited as well.
And people can't do both of those. So either you take our low-income senior discount, which will go to 40%, or you can apply for the $300 credit. They end up being roughly the same depending on where you're at, but I think we're trying to give people as many options as possible to throw down at Community Action, they can currently apply, they're used to dealing with city staff, they can certainly do it that way. I just, I just see we need, we need to work our way towards a spot where it's less, less cumbersome for both sides.
Agreed, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right, any questions for Brad? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion if we had one.
Your Honor, I move to adopt ordinance number 2021-14 relating to low-income assistance for utility customers, amending WCC 9.02.0104 and WCC 9.02.0107. Second.
Motion by councilmember Harold, second by councilmember Asparza, to adopt ordinance number 2021-14 relating to low-income assistance for utility customers, amending when anti-city code 9.02.010 sub-paragraph four, and when anti-city code 9.02.010 sub-paragraph seven. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Last but not least.
He was going to stay for all of it anyway.
We got to go 15 minutes, and Tammy gets a full hour off.
Okay.
So ask a lot of questions.
Oh, no.
She can take a full hour off tomorrow, it's okay.
So, good evening, Mayor, Council, Steve Smith, City Attorney. We have before you tonight ordinance number 15, I think.
Yep.
And the purpose of this ordinance is to amend our criminal code related to drug possession. And it stems from a Supreme Court case that was decided or issued on February 25th, so not too long ago, that basically found our state's drug possession code unconstitutional because it did not have a mens rea element or a knowing element. What happened was, there was a drug bust over, over in Spokane. One of the people that was arrested was this woman, Shannon Blake. They found in her coin pocket in her pants, a baggie of methamphetamine. She said, hey, I got these pants from a friend. I didn't know there were drugs in the pocket. And her boyfriend testified at the trial that she got the pants from a friend, and she didn't know there were drugs in the pocket. She was found guilty at trial, went to the Court of Appeals where it was upheld, and the lower courts found that it was a strict liability statute, and it wasn't necessary to have a knowing element. The Supreme Court changed that and said, under the current state of the law, we've previously implied a knowing, knowing this element, but under the current state of the law, we can't impute or imply that knowing this element anymore, that only the legislature can fix that. And so they found the statute unconstitutional and reversed her conviction. So that left our, our statute related to drug possession basically unenforceable, because nobody's going to say, yeah, that was mine, you know? So that was, so that was only on February 25th. The legislature has, I understand, had two bills introduced that would change this. It's a relatively simple fix, I think, by just adding the words knowingly to the drug possession statute. Those bills have gone nowhere. There was a third bill that was introduced that takes a different tack, actually, and basically decriminalizes drug possession. So it's a very different approach. I don't know where that will go. Probably nowhere this session, I would expect. So a lot of local governments are taking it into their own hands to deal with the situation locally as best they can. We have adopted many of the state statutes with regard to drug possession. We can only control the misdemeanor level crime, so the change we're making will only affect the lower-level amounts that are misdemeanors, gross misdemeanors. As far as felonies go, that'll have to be amended by the, the legislature. So we can do what we can, and at least it'll help, it keeps that tool in the toolbox for our officers. So with that explanation, that's what ordinance 15 does, is it amends our code to basically just add the word knowingly to the possession element. So. So that we have to establish, to establish the crime, we have to, or prove the crime, we have to establish the element of, of knowing, knowing this, or knowledge.
And is it okay for the city to have a municipal code that's stronger than the state code when it comes to drug possession?
It is on this topic, yeah.
Because it's a gross misdemeanor?
Yes.
Got it. And we control those, not the state?
Yeah, previously, they had actually preempted the field on drug enforcement and drug law, but that is no longer the case with respect to these misdemeanors.
Great. Any questions?
So...
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
With that, with that in mind, Steve, I mean, if we can make our code more restrictive than the state's, why, why do we have to use the word knowingly instead of just in possession of?
Oh, well, we can't make it more restrictive. I mean, the, the code without the mens rea element or without the knowingly element is unconstitutional. We do not have the right to keep, to have the code without that element.
The Supreme Court has said that it's unconstitutional.
Exactly.
Our current code is unconstitutional, so this fixes our current code.
Yes, that's exactly right. Basically, the explanation is that this, the way the law was, it was a strict liability code. If you had drugs on you, whether you knew it or not, you were strictly liable for that. You could be found guilty. The Supreme Court, and that's what's gone on for years, the Supreme Court said, no longer, that's an overreach of your police powers, legislature, you, you've got to fix that. The statute and codes written that way are not enforceable. So we have to add this knowingly element.
So we can allow marijuana, which is against federal code, but we cannot arrest somebody for possession if they don't knowingly know they had it in their possession?
That's correct.
That is correct.
Yikes. Thank you.
And that's been the law in this state for the last six weeks or so, so...
Yeah, since February 25th.
Yeah, almost two months, so. And we have not arrested a lot of people in possession because of that.
Basically, no law.
Yeah.
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 On possession.
All right, any other questions for Steve? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-15, amending Chapter 6A.30 of the Wenatchee City Code pertaining to controlled substances and declaring a public emergency regarding controlled substances and providing for an effective date.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hornby and second by Councilmember Cuevas to approve ordinance 2021-15, amending Chapter 6A.30 of the Wenatchee City Code pertaining to controlled substances, declaring a public emergency regarding controlled substances, and providing for an effective
Any questions? So the emergency clause, the emergency clause makes an effective when?
Five days.
Is it five days?
What did we, or immediately?
Immediately upon adoption.
Immediately.
Good. Yeah, Keith, go ahead.
Well, I'm, I'm just going to make a comment and go on record that I, I totally disagree with this, but I understand that our hands are tied by the state and that we have to do this, so I think it's kind of silly that we have to pass an ordinance that we have no choice in, and that's, that's all I have to say about them.
All right, any questions?
I, well, I forget it.
All right, all of those in favor of the ordinance, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Appreciate you getting that done.
Sure.
I emailed him earlier this week and asked him when we were going to see it, and he said this next week, yes.
It was already done.
It was already done, so.
That's a good answer.
I knew they were working on it.
Yeah.
Mayor's Report. Let me sort of see what's gone on in the last little bit. Did have a tri-commission meeting, that was fine. Been talking with Glenn De Vries about some homeless program staffing issues, so I don't know if you knew that Sandra is going to retire, so we're trying to figure out sort of what to do with that next, and we've got some ideas that we'll share with you when the, when the time is, is correct. I was out on Budry Street for a Firewise event with Commissioner Franz earlier this week. Did speak on the phone with Congresswoman Schreier, with all the Eastern Washington mayors to talk about our ARP funding, which we've been working with staff on. Finance Committee had the first look at it today in terms of some things we're thinking about. We'll keep you posted. We're still probably mid-May from getting guidance from Treasury and also getting some money, so we're starting kicking around what to do with that, and we'll look for some more guidance from Treasuries to where we fall with, with that, and we'll keep you, keep you talking about that. Did meet with the county commissioners earlier this week, our week, our monthly half-hour conversation. Other than that, we had directors today. I, I don't, there's been some rumblings about the governor putting us back in phase two. I think if we go to phase two in terms of city operations, I don't believe anything is going to change. As you can tell, we're sort of open for business upstairs officially on Monday. We have the security guard downstairs, and so, but I think under phase two, we're still allowed to be open, we're still, we just have to worry about the 25% capacities, so I don't think in terms of the way we normally conduct business, if we go from three to two, it will affect anything. It will affect some downtown businesses, the restaurants and some of those, and some high, high school sporting events, and the number of people that can attend those, but so the rumor is, six counties were going to go to phase two. I don't know if that was the truth or not, but that was the rumor, although he had a press conference today and didn't say anything about it, right?
He said that there would be some counties that would roll back.
Okay, so I think Shalane County is really, really close, and Douglas County is quite a bit over the top in terms of too many positive cases, but needless to say, we're sort of monitoring that and trying to figure out where all that, all that happens. Next Thursday is April 15th, which is a national holiday for those of us in my profession, so I will not be here next Thursday afternoon.
It has nothing to do with birthdays or anything like that either, does it?
No, it doesn't. So Councilmember Kulas will run the meeting, if you guys choose to have one, it's a work session. I think it's, Wata is making a presentation in the chamber, so you guys can talk about whether or not you continue to have that. The meeting on the 22nd, which is the meeting following that, we'll need to try to run that through quickly because the WDA has their banquet shortly after that, and then we do not meet on the 29th, nor do we meet on whatever the next day is, 5th or 6th, whatever, so be a little bit of sort of juggling as we go through here. The 22nd meeting, we will have some folks in the audience, I know the Apple Blossom girls are coming that night, and it wouldn't surprise me if we have a few members of the public in the audience that evening. Councilmembers? Anything going on?
We had a good, had a good solid waste meeting the other day. They are, we're in the process of updating our comprehensive plan. Part of that is to try and encourage more recycling, and of course, many of you are aware that there's been some problems with recycling, with China shutting down what materials they'll take, but even with that, we're doing pretty darn good. Little update from the moderate race, moderate waste facility. We've been working hard trying to get Douglas County to come on board, and they have turned us down, so at this time, it is still only Shalane County that's bringing their moderate waste out there. With that said, it's amazing the amount of materials that we're getting out there, 19,000 pounds of oil, 4,000 pounds of antifreeze, 23,000 pounds of paint-related stuff, and the list just goes on. So, so far, been pretty successful and seems to be doing well. It would be great to get Douglas County in there just because it would help spread the cost of running the facility out just a little bit. Other than that, things are going well.
And great for the environment, because God knows where all that stuff would have ended up, so that's, and I've been out there a couple of times, they do a really nice job. And speaking, and speaking of...
I think it's been a very good success.
Yeah, and speaking of Douglas County, we had had three or four meetings, cities of Wenatchee, East Wenatchee, Shalane, and Douglas County to discuss the thoughts of a regional jail. Obviously, the jail at Shalane County is, I'm 50 or 60 years old, it's an outdated design, so we had, again, four or five meetings, just sort of talking about would it make sense to try to do something regional and, but we got to the point where three of the four entities wanted to continue and Douglas County did not, so they have pulled out of that discussion, so I'm not sure, fairly certain that we, I don't think we can go forward with just the city of East Wenatchee, city of Wenatchee, and Shalane County in terms of trying to figure something out, so not sure where that's going to go, but it was disappointing that they chose to, to not participate at this time. But I just thought, I bet you all know that. Councilmembers, anything else?
Emails have gone out to those agencies that will be applying for RFP, through the RFPs, through the homeless task force for those grant dollars, and they've set up a time for an orientation meeting because the whole process has changed a little bit this year. They'll be changing around some things just because of the increased funding and also changes with the state, and that's about it. We didn't have a meeting this week, Glenn was out sick, so.
Mark Travis, anything?
WDA and the city are looking at revamping the trash cans in downtown. Exciting stuff dealing with trash. Probably one thing that is exciting though is the, what are they called, Big Belly?
Big Belly.
Big Belly Trash Compacting for Trash and Recycling. Probably be closer to the convention center that they'll do that, and guess the idea behind that, it costs a little bit more upfront, but it can go several weeks, if not a month, without being emptied, and so we'll see how that goes. We'll look for that in our downtown soon, as soon as they decide on a design that they like for the trash cans, and the Big Belly will probably show up.
Does it go in the parking lot?
I, I'm not in charge of location, so I don't know.
The Big Belly would be out on Wenatchee Avenue.
Yeah.
They're not huge. They're big bellies, but they're not huge, and the talk was, a lot of the convention ears are asking, where's our recycling downtown?
Oh, yeah.
And so this will be front and center.
Good idea.
Yeah, and, you know, the Hadeen Plaza area to...
I like it.
They're going to do that, and then there's two prototypical trash receptacles that are going to be obtained, and they're going to be deployed, and then comments will be solicited from the businesses on the designs.
I guess those garbage cans are 30 years old, and you got to open them to get at them, and Waste Management doesn't like dealing with them, and our city staff doesn't like dealing with them, so it sounds like we're going to be getting some new downtown garbage cans.
And a lot of them don't stay shut anymore, so they're, they're kind of a hazard in some, in some ways.
Yeah, and it sounds like the WDA and the city are going to split those costs once we figure it out, or get something close to 50/50, so, which is my standard deal with Linda, so she, she remembered it. All right, anything else for the good of the order?
I think the one last thing from the committee meeting that I thought was interesting was multiple department staff is working with multiple state agencies to develop a mule-deer habitat bank, basically, so that when development projects come in that could have an identifiable adverse impact on mule-deer habitat, they'll be able to buy credits and help purchase this habitat management area up, up, up in the hill, so it's pretty, pretty forward-thinking on our staff's part and the, and the agencies to put this together.
Yeah, it's a good idea. We've obviously had some issues with that, with some other developments, and so being able to have a bank that they could buy credits for would be, be pretty awesome. I think they've got a site they're already looking at near Saddle Rock. All right, with all that...
Just, I want to put my two cents in for having a work session next week, and one of the things I would like to discuss is the interlocal agreement with East Wenatchee regarding the low-barrier shelter. I think we need to discuss forming a committee to get that taken care of.
Yeah, we, I spoke, that's fine. I spoke with Glenn today. I do want to make sure that we, there's obviously lots of things that that group has to do, both Glenn and, and Sandra and the team, and the low-barrier shelter, we got some contracts we got to work out with Shalane County, obviously an interlocal agreement with East Wenatchee, and I would hope that we are able to cite something and have something operational by the end of this year. If we spend all of our time writing contracts and code and making agreements, we're not going to find a place and get it up and going, and so I want to make sure that we're not too overly focused on one side or the other to the point that by the time you need a shelter in, in November and December, that we've got something that's operational, and I was talking with Laura about that today, and that too is an uphill battle. This is already, you know, April, and, you know, we haven't selected a site yet, we haven't done any improvements to the site, we haven't purchased any of the, there's just a lot to do, so I'm fine with that for next week, Keith, I think it's the right thing to do, but I also want to make sure that we're not losing focus on trying to have something operational by, you know, late this year.
Agreed, but yeah, it just, it needs to be done right, and part of that is making sure that Wenatchee and East Wenatchee agree on what needs to be done and so on.
Yep. Okay, we'll add that to the agenda for next week. With, with that, we're adjourned.